Now we start the second session of this meeting. I'd like to welcome the deputations and individuals. You can wear your earpieces, you can select the channel. Channel zero is the floor, channel one is Cantonese, and channel two is English. So I'll wait for all the deputations and individuals to be seated. Please be seated. You can wear your earpieces, you can select the channel. Channel zero, floor, channel one, Cantonese, channel two, English. Now for deputations and representatives, please note that your written submissions and oral representations are not protected by the Legislative House and Privilegiarship Ordinance. I invite the deputations and individuals to speak, three minutes each. When the bell rings, please desist from speaking. So please be concise in speaking, because if you have further information, you can provide it to us in writing. Now, first, Ms. MacChay-Hauling. I would like to thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I would like to thank councillors and colleagues for listening to the voice of the sector. For the first session, I heard that some councillors are concerned about the wastage rate of teachers, that is fifteen percent. They worry that teaching quality will be compromised. I can tell you that our KG teachers, actually, they are very enterprising and progressive. For Easter this year, the Ad organized a Shanghai delegation, and the quota was full. For the Hong Kong I Ad, KG teachers, Alumni Association, etc. We have a thirty-seven strong delegation from the Beijing Normal University Study Tour, six days. So they registered early. So the KG teachers, actually, they are very eager to equip themselves. So our holidays are not just for fun. Our holidays are such that if there are worthwhile study tools, people will register. So they are very progressive and enterprising. So I'm disappointed that for the pay scale, you have not implemented that. So this is a blow to the morale of the KG teachers. Hope that with our voice, noted, and then you take action. I understand that the government takes an active attitude towards fifteen-year free education. And in the short term, a committee will be set up to study this matter, and the sector welcomes that. But in the process, I hope that you enhance transparency. Now, in the sector, many organizations, such that many of the representatives cannot join the committee. We do not just simply rely on hearsay about the progress of the committee. We hope that the outset for the organizations which have not joined the committee, they can get some information from the government so that the government can hold meetings with them and can contact them, etc. And to keep them posted of the progress. We hope that the committee can shorten the work timetable so that, ideally, for less than two years, you can complete the work and then you can implement fifteen-year free education. So this is what I would like to say, thank you. Ms. Leng Shao Ting. I'm from Honment Teacher Education Alumni Association, I'm the representative. Agree with the Alliance aspirations. We hope to highlight several points. Now first, for the public hearing, last week, I understand that Mr. Ng went overseas to conduct study tours, it's very good. Now, every day, actually, we have to prepare for the lessons. We have activities, we have the music hours, we have group activities, we have teaching aid and teaching materials. So for three hours, we don't have leisure time, we don't have break time, we don't have time to go to the washroom. We have fifteen minutes for our meals. Then we have to prepare for the afternoon session. And for whole-day schooling, actually, a lot of time is really spent. And after school, the teachers are still very busy. The students are not just looking at reading books, they rely on experience. So the teachers really would like to prepare different materials.
To achieve quality teaching, teachers must reflect on the effectiveness of the teaching on a daily basis, and they have to assess these students, and they have to undergo review by an external school team. And all these are very heavy workloads. So I think we should lower the teacher-student ratio and employ extra staff. Now, after the voucher scheme has been implemented, teachers are very active in furthering their studies. After our school hours, we attend evening schools at 6:00 PM, and traveling takes up a lot of our time, and we have to have dinner quickly. And then, when we arrive home, it is already midnight, and there are still heavy workloads waiting to be done. I am quite fortunately, relatively, some of my friends or coworkers have children, and they are pregnant, and they still further studies, and that is really appreciated by the others of us. And we are furthering our studies, but then, at the same time, our salary scale has been scrapped, and it's really doing a disrespect to teachers. And the government is saying that it will spend four hundred and eighty million dollars to sponsor students to study overly overseas. I think the government has neglected our needs, and how come that you are not taking care of our needs? Now, several weeks ago, our school responded to the Alliance's calls, and then the children just asked me, "Is it true that Tsui Hua-Lang is lying?" Now, don't mistake that children are ignorant, they know everything. Now, please allow us to set a good example to our children. Next one, Ms. Ho Yit-oh Principal. Secretary, good morning. I agree totally with Ms. Leng. As a principal, I appreciate the efforts of our frontline workers, their hard works, and we are dismayed by the government's policy. And that's why we are here, to voice our views. Just now, I traveled on the MTR, and on the electronic display board, it said that the secretary, that the government or the secretary has not changed its stance on implementing fifteen-year free education. And what we discussed in the first session was already relayed to the media. Now, information technology has developed so rapidly these days, and why is it that we are so slow in implementing fifteen-year free education? We need to take two years. Why is that the case? We need to go to overseas countries to study, and so on. Now, information technology is developing so fast, and why do we still need two years? Now, there has been a review by a working group on the pre-primary school education, and the results of that review should also be of reference. Why do we still need two years? And the teacher next to me has made it very clear that the teachers are suffering now. And please, Secretary, please give us more support, and don't wait for two years. Two years is too long. Thank you, Ms. Ho. Next one, Mr. Kenny Choi.
Chairman, Secretary, members, good morning. I want to discuss about the voucher scheme. And I think the voucher scheme has done a lot to help the professional development of teachers. But in the transitional period, we hope that a full subsidy can be given to KG education. In the short period, we see that there are different systems in the KG and nursery, childcare centers, and there is a great staff wastage. We hope that the administration can increase the value of the voucher. And please note that KG, especially whole-day KG, are performing a host of functions, and we hope that we can get more resources to do our work. As for the pay structure, I know that the, some universities will be implementing a curriculum on early childhood education in the curriculum, and I hope that the administration can draw up a pay scale for KG teachers, modeled after primaries and secondary schools, so that we can have a clear career prospects and to attract more people to join the trade. In the past decade, Hong Kong's students' participation and OECD, their results are very encouraging. We should be proud of those because our results have been outstanding. And I think the KG teachers have a part to play, have contributed to that. The popularization of pre-primary education is going to contribute to the development of the society as a whole. In nineteen seventy-one, we launched free education, and nineteen seventy-eight, we launched twelve years of free education. We hope that fifteen-year free education can be provided as soon as possible. Next, Ms. Leng Yuki. I'm a consanguine of the KG teachers. I don't want to talk about the importance of pre-primary education here. And for those of you here, you would definitely provide pre-primary education for your children. I'm very happy that in the last hearing and in the hearing today, the secretary has listened to us, and we all agree that we should improve pre-primary education. And I think the government and the society as a whole is heading towards the same direction. We understand the complexity of introducing changes to the service model. We agree to the establishment of a committee to gauge the public wisdom on the matter. And I think we should not procrastinate anymore. And we should not allow those who really have the passion to go before anything is done. And we don't want to see a heavy wastage of the talents in the field. And we emphasize our demand that the government should implement the roadmap for fifteen-year free education in two years. As what the secretary said, urgent matters should be dealt with urgently, and in the transition period, arrangements should be made. Now, on this, we have four views. First, we have to help parents, we should increase the value of the voucher to lessen the burden of parents. Second, to help the KGs. The government should treat fairly all KGs. And in disposing rent subsidy to KGs, to provide rent subsidy to KGs who have turned non-profit-making, and to allow more room for their existence and to survive. We understand or appreciate the administration's difficulties in doing that. But then, rental differs a lot in the market, and in the transition period. Now, for KGs who have been, we can use the median rent subsidy to use that as a ceiling for rent subsidy to be given to all in the future. Third, we should assist the teachers, we should be providing direct subsidies to teachers' salaries. And the teachers' salaries can be assured and that they can concentrate on the work. Fourthly, we should assist the young children. Everything we do is for the good of the young children, so that the young children can get quality education. And quality education needs a quality teaching team. And no elite teacher can handle that alone. So continuous professional development for teachers is very important, and we should provide more resources to prepare for the implementation of fifteen-year free education. Lastly, I support the eight proposals of the Alliance, One Voice, One Action. Next, Ms. Leng Lai Ting.
Yes, you can please be seated. Well, can you please speak to the mic? Chairman, members, coworkers, I'm from the Education Employees General Union. We talk a lot with parents and grassroots teachers, and we understand their plight and aspirations. They asked me to voice their views on their behalf. From September this year, the government should implement fifteen-year free education and establish a pay structure for teachers. We have five demands. First is providing full subsidy to all KGs. The government should not treat KG as a market. The education should be treated as education, and we should nurture students' ability. Actually, we should achieve that objective. And second, we should establish a pay structure for teachers to show more respect to teachers. Third, we should ask parents to set a good example, to advance together with their students, to build a caring culture in the community. From the family level, we should start work and respond to issues raised through family tragedies recently. Third, to promote whole-day KGs and help double-income families. We should try to resolve deep-seated conflicts and make use of that crisis to promote quality education. Fifth, the education bureau should do a good job in consulting grassroots teachers. Our detailed opinions are already put in our submission and forwarded to the Legislative. You can visit our website and provide your valuable opinions to us. Lastly, I want to give this bottle of salt to the secretary, and it represents the respect shown to teachers. Should we position our teachers as the salt and the light of the world? Can, I ask the secretary can hold up this bottle of salt and to show that the government respects teachers, and that the government should take the lead in respecting teachers, and to promote a culture in the community where moral standards are upheld. Now, when you take a meal, Secretary, don't forget this bottle of salt and make more contributions to the education sector in Hong Kong. Thank you very much. The next one is Ms. Lau Zong Man.
Chairman, Secretary, and friends here, I'm from the Education Conversions. I support the eight proposals of the Alliance. In the interest of time, I don't want to repeat those. Many experts have told us that the age before sex education, in that time, affects the whole life of the child. Every child has the right to quality education. There is a huge surplus, a fiscal surplus of over six billion dollars in the budget. And the government is well-positioned to devote more resources to support pre-primary education. I think in the transition period, the administration should increase substantially the subsidy to every KG student so that all the tuition fees are fully paid up by the government. Now, I want to turn to the pay scale issue. A number of teachers have left the sector, and that is very heartbreaking. I think the administration should draw up a salary scale and a qualification accreditation system to stabilize the workforce and to retain talent. Since the launch of the voucher scheme, the government has asked that teachers attain a certificate or degree. But then, at the same time, it's scrapped the normative salary scale, and it is showing disrespect for the teachers, and it is dealing a blow to the morale of the teachers. I think the government should draw up a reasonable pay scale for teachers, modeled after that for the primary and secondary school teachers. A reasonable pay scale should be drawn up also on children with special needs. Since the age before sex is a golden period for children's learning, I think the government should identify early the children with special needs to make good use of the critical period in their learning, and to provide special assistance to their teachers, to their parents, and their learning. And also strengthen teachers' training in that regard, and that will help reduce the need for children and the need for rehabilitation services. And that will also narrow the differences between children and their ability, and also cut the costs to the society as a whole in the future. Also, I think the government should set up a consultation platform to monitor the implementation of pre-primary education policies. The voucher scheme comes in with a lot of problems, and the teachers are treated unfairly. There are a lot of problems in that area. I think the administration should set up the dedicated committee to come up with relevant policies. Next one, Ms. Gloria Leng.
Chairman, Secretary, Mrs. Yip, members, I'm from Carrot's, Hong Kong. I'm very happy that in the first session, I'm pleasantly surprised because the secretary said that he is going to issue a press release on future planning. I think talent is the key or precious resources of the society. I want to talk about resources, but I am not just talking about physical resources. And I think we should not only take the education sector as a market. The secretary said at the beginning, said that pre-primary education is a cornerstone, and it reflects the importance of pre-primary education. The secretary said in future, the administration will put in a lot of resources to provide fifteen-free-year education with short, medium, and long-term measures. This goes to show that the new term of government will deliver their earlier promise. And I'm sure that all of us here would join you in implementing those policies. I want to focus on our concerns. First, the value of pre-primary education and its objectives. Of course, education should come with an objective. There are two objectives. One is child-based, and then, child teaching or learning and care should come hand in hand. According to OECD, there are many studies covering over twenty countries. Their studies show that if the government can directly provide resources to the operators, they would be achieving good results in cost control, enhancement of quality, and professional development. And because of this, we agree with the eight proposals of the Alliance, and particularly, not to marketize the pre-primary education sector so that the education workers can be given autonomy. Second, it's on the need for pre-primary education. Many friends have said that diversified service model is important to the families and also to the children. So I would reiterate that in implementing the fifteen-year free education, the administration should examine the need for whole-day KGs and should also provide various resources to these KGs. I don't want to repeat the eight proposals of the Alliance. In the last few seconds, I hope that the administration should attend to two issues. One is, in the next one to two years, before free education is implemented, there is a full subsidy to whole-day KGs. Second, the government should rule out each and every measure one by one when they mature. I also hope that the administration can pool all their capabilities and together, capabilities from the sector and so on, to drive your cause. We would also hope that we can take concrete work for the benefit of our children. Ms. Leng, can you lower your placard? Because I'm not able to see the people behind you. Ms. Lysel Ching. Chairman, Secretary, I'm from the Hong Kong Chinese Women's Club Kindergarten Nursery School. I fully agree with the eight proposals of the Alliance. Teachers, I mean, children are the pillars of the facility in future, and good, pre-primary education lays a foundation for lifelong learning and whole-person development. Last week, the secretary said that basic education doesn't include pre-primary education, and there were conflicts, and I hope that further clarification can be made. Now, basic education is must and not something that can be disbanded with. There is this menu which sets certain requirements on teaching and learning. Various KGs have different focuses on learning, but at the same time, we have this mission of taking care and teaching our children. Now, pre-primary education in Hong Kong showed us the dual functions of teaching and caring for the children. This is something that shouldn't be taken lightly. Now, apart from the traditional half-day KGs, we should allow for the existence of whole-day KGs. We should allow for a diversified service model.
So we would like to have full subsidy for all KGs across the board, like the half-day KGs, whole-day KGs, as well as KGs in the public sector with a diversity of modes. Now, whole-day KGs receive less subsidy than half-day KGs. So I think we should have one-off school-based subsidies for whole-day KGs so that we can have additional support staff. In this way, we can ease the problem of recruitment. Because we have a high wastage rate, and we need to open the KGs for long hours. To teach well, we need good teachers, so we can't ignore the quality of KG teachers. Well, for those who are qualified KG teachers, there are over three thousand who have got a bachelor degree, and over six thousand have a certificate in early childhood education. We have to set up a fund for the KG teachers, and we should have, we should lend support to the school-based support services, and we should cater for the needs of individual children. Moreover, there must be a pay scale so as to stabilize the workforce, and in this way, can also enhance the quality of KG education. Thank you. Next, Ms. Shen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. Mr. Ng and colleagues, I am Shen Lai Kuen. I'm the President of Boys and Girls Clubs Association of Hong Kong. Well, we are a service organization, we provide a diversity of services. We've been in Hong Kong for a long time. Other than working for children and young people, we also run non-profit-making kindergartens. Therefore, we would like to take this opportunity to reflect to you the views of the whole-day kindergarteners. Tell you about our difficulties as well as the pay kindergartners, tell you about our difficulties as well as the painful experience of our teachers. Well, the Education Bureau has got this menu for pre-primary education. In the forward, it makes it clear that the purpose of the menu is to describe the requirements in relation to adult care and then there may be a difference in the focus concerning early childhood services, but then both care and education are equally important as the visions and missions. In fact, in paragraph seven point one point one, it is said that internationally recognized quality early childhood education means that we meet the needs of the young children. We should take care of both education and care. And then for KGs in Hong Kong, including whole-day KGs, I think we do emphasize the dual roles of education and care. But unfortunately, we can see that this is already the sixth year to launch the PGVS, but I'm afraid that the number of students would determine the amount of subsidies received by school irrespective of whether it is a whole-day KG or a half-day KG. So this is PSPA's basis, this is unfair to the whole-day KGs. We run longer hours and therefore the number of students would be smaller and as a result, whole-day KGs receive much less subsidy than half-day counterparts. This is unfair and as a result, in the past five or six years, we're faced with a severe problem of wastage of teachers. Even if some of the teachers stay with us, they are very keen, but they still have to share the extra workload because of the lack of manpower. And they have to face long working hours, they don't have time to prepare the lessons and they have to enhance themselves. They're really burnt out. Sometimes we get a new recruit, we think that we will solve the problem, but then in less than a month's time, another one will leave and then we are coming back to the same problem. So it's a vicious cycle. We don't know when we can break it. So the teachers are burnt out and they have a low morale. So please understand our difficulties. Even if you can't have fifteen years of free education in the short term, can you not in the transitional period provide more manpower support so that both the kindergartens and the teachers can have some sort of assistance?
Thank you. Next, Ms. Lee.
I'm a full-time student at the Baptist University. I will become a teacher in May when I graduate. I had a degree, I have a degree in applied science, social sciences. And in fact, I would like to become a KG teacher when I was in the secondary school. I still hold on to my passion. I like young children and I think that education is a very meaningful job for the sake of our future generation, but I don't think the administration gives us the due respect. Time of the game, we've been asking for an enhancement of the quality of KG teachers, but then the pay has not been changed for a long time. We aren't asking for a handsome salary, but we just want to be given the due recognition. We're just asking for something which is reasonable. Therefore, we must set up a salary scale. I don't think we're asking for anything that is out of proportion. Many teachers have left the workforce. It is a helpless situation and it is disappointing. Now, for the pupils, I think they are not very adaptive. If they have to learn to adapt to different teachers all the time, it will cause anxiety among them and they will lose a sense of security and it will affect their growth. Therefore, the administration must make sure that the pay will be enhanced so as to retain the teachers, so as to stabilize the workforce. Now, the birth rates are lowering and the government would like us to give birth to more children, but then property prices are shooting up, are shooting, rising all the time and we, we want something to be done to help the families to cope with the financial burden. Now, even with the PVS, many families have to come up with a few thousand dollars to pay the fees, so it is not encouraging anybody to have, to raise a family. I'm a woman and seeing that the KG education is in such a poor state, I'm worried about starting a family. And lastly, may I ask this question? For KG teachers, day in, day out, we attend to the students personally, we don't receive a lot of pay, but then for the educational officials, they aren't clear about the definition of early childhood education, we haven't got a long-term policy and yet they're collecting a handsome pay. It is a mockery, it is unreasonable. Thank you.
Next, Ms. Tong Chung Yi. Mr. Chairman, Secretary, ladies and gentlemen, colleagues. I'm studying for a diploma course at Baptist University. I'm also having my internship at the kindergarten. I have two children, one about to go to KG, another studying at a P1. So I can tell from my own experience that the first years are very important for the growth of a child. I have the experience of parent voluntary work. I understand that young children have many special needs. If the administration can provide more resources for the development of KG professionalism, then it means that teachers can identify children with special educational needs at a much earlier stage and it will be very important. Today, we fight for fifteen years free education. We also want the administration to provide better service for the SENs. Now, many parents know that their children have special needs, but then they haven't got the opportunities to help their children in the first six years and then such children will be greatly affected. I think if the administration can face the question squarely, such as sign more resources for KG education, have fifteen years free education, then parents can spend more money on other needs of the children. In this way, it will help the children and then they can benefit on a lifelong basis. Well, I have decided to go to the KG sector. This is because it is a very important stage for the age band zero to six, it is a golden opportunity and the cognitive development, the linguistic development will be at a very critical time when compared with the secondary school days. So it is important to teach them properly. I have a master's degree. In fact, I could have taught in a secondary school, primary school, or even post-secondary school, but in fact, I've chosen to teach at a KG. This is because KG education is important and this is the most important stage in a child's development. Therefore, dedicated and loving, caring teachers have joined the workforce. I recognize the importance of early childhood education, which is also part of the basic education. I think the administration should bear the responsibility and the government should be committed towards early childhood development. The current term administration has suggested that there will be fifteen years free education. Now, four hundred and eighty million dollars will be spent on the ELIS, but have you ever considered an alternative that is give the money to the local KG sector? Fifteen years free education is a question of money going to the schools. I think by providing fifteen years free education, it means that parents, teachers, everybody will benefit. There is a strong call for free education for fifteen years, it is going to benefit so many people. So I hope the Community, the Education Bureau can understand the importance. In Macau in Taiwan, they have already made an announcement to fifteen years free education. We can't afford to lag behind. Thank you. Next, Ms. Chong Po Yi.
Thank you. I study at Baptist University. I'm attending a whole-day course for early childhood education. I'm very enthusiastic. When I was during the secondary school stage, I have already determined to become a KG teacher. I studied physics and I obtained good results when I was at the university, but I didn't choose to develop in the field of science and I've become a clerk at a KG and I have now enrolled with this course because I want to realize my dream. Now, early childhood is a very important stage. Therefore, KG education should become part of basic education, like primary education and secondary education. All children should be given equal opportunities to develop themselves. In many advanced economies, a long time ago, they have already started to provide free KG education. In Macau and in Taiwan, they have already made announcements to do so. In Hong Kong, parents and teachers are frustrated because so far, the administration has yet to make it part of our basic education. In the latest budget, it was surprising to see that the secretary will spend four hundred and eighty million dollars to sponsor a few illegal students to go overseas to study. It is disappointing, it is shocking. It seems that we have been transferred back to the nineteen seventies, where that is the time before the introduction of nine-years-free education by Sir Macleod. So are we having a retrograde? The government would rather spend the precious resources on a small number of illegal students than spending the money across the board on the KG sector. I just want to know what grand ideas the administration has gone. Now, our children will be the future force of development of the community. They are the future masters and yet we don't give them opportunities to receive quality education. Now, for the illegal students, upon completion of training, they only have to serve Hong Kong for two years, two years, a mere two years, and then there will be the end of the story. The illegal students will have a lot of abilities to go to other fields. I just doubt whether they would stay in the same educational sector. I think the money should have been spent on the teachers, retaining the experienced and quality teachers. Even if all the illegal students will stay in the field of education, but what about the class ratio? Does it mean that the Education Bureau think that the illegal students can teach a lot more students than other teachers, one to fifty, one to one hundred? Does it mean that the illegal students will become the tutorial kings and queens? I just wonder very much. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chong. Next, Ms. Chen Cho Hang, Principal. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Secretary, thank you. I'm a whole-day KG school principal. I want to say that I support the aspirations of the Alliance. I would like to refer to paragraph seven point one point one of the menu for pre-primary education. Quality pre-primary education must meet the needs of the children, emphasizing both education and care. Our local KGs do play this role. We open five and a half days from eight-thirty to six-fifteen or even eight o'clock in the evening. We provide different services. We have aftercare and then even when there is bad weather, we are still open to the kindergarten to cater for the needs of the needy parents. We need a stable workforce, but then with the PVS, we haven't got reasonable levels of support. We have long hours for the teachers, they have to work nine hours and they have to take on board the extended hours as well, but they still need time to prepare the lessons and to make records of the progress of students. They are dedicated and yet in return, they don't get the respect, they don't get the reasonable pay. They have no future and then there is a high rate of wastage. So please understand that the operation of whole-day and half-day KGs are very different. So please set your priorities right. In the two-year transitional period, make sure that you give to the whole-day KGs a one-off subsidy. But I'm not talking about a one-off subsidy for us to buy toys. In fact, we want to get extra help so as to reduce the class size and I don't think you should count to the panel teachers or the school principals. On the other hand, I think teachers' pay and their continuous professional development should be emphasized. Well, I think the KG teachers are very eager to enhance themselves. Well, before the days of the PVS, KG teachers spend their own time and money to enhance themselves. Today, we have got over thirty percent of the KG teachers who are degree holders. Now, for teachers to enhance themselves, we haven't got any subsidies, they have to dip into their own pockets. I've got ten teachers, three of them are degree holders, but only one of them benefited from the earlier support scheme. They have got high qualifications, but we cannot give due recognition. Completion of a degree course will cost you one hundred thousand dollars. It is very difficult for teachers on such a low level of pay. Please make sure that you will treasure such a quality workforce. For the C certificate holders and degree holders, make sure that you give them a reasonable pay by having a salary scale and we must have a continuous education fund for KG teachers. You should also have localized research for KG education. Thank you. Next, Mr. Chan Ting Sheng.
I'm a student at Baptist University on childhood education. I support the views of many deputations and the sector. Quality education is very important and teachers' quality is very important. Teacher training is very important. The budgets allocate four hundred and eighty million dollars for brilliant students to study overseas. But how about the local teacher training? Will there be any investment? Four hundred and eighty million dollars may not be for those who have long-term commitments to education. Why is it the government will allocate four hundred and eighty million dollars in this regard? How about the support for local KG teachers? Many KG teachers are very disappointed. We have to implement fifteen-year free education. We have to formulate the roadmap for the fifteen-year free education. See to see in his election manifesto, talk about fair and high-quality people in this field. In Hong Kong, not too many males are committing themselves to KG teaching. Now, I'm studying a course at Baptist University. Actually, the money that I have to spend for the whole course is more than two hundred thousand dollars. But the salaries for KG teachers are really too modest and sometimes it may not be enough for the KG teachers to maintain their living and the working hours are very long in terms of KG teachers. And the hours are longer than those for secondary teachers or even tertiary institutions. Why is it that KG teachers and the prospective KG teachers cannot get fair treatment? Thank you.
Mr. Pan Keen Ta. Mr. Chairman, Secretary, colleagues, counselors. I'm speaking on behalf of the Pentecostal Church of Hong Kong Childcare Service. We have submission with the Service Committee. I agree with the eight-point aspiration of the Alliance. Now, first of all, the government should really talk about the full-day schooling aspect, especially the afternoon session, just like OLE, other learning experiences. Now, we have to cater for the interests of the students, for example, stories, music, sensory, training, creativity, etc. Actually, this is like other learning experience, OLE, at secondary schools, so we can promote holistic developments of students so that they can be trained in sports, arts, music, etc. So this sort of thing should be incorporated into formal education. You can make reference to Macau. The second aspect is that the government should keep, have resources for nonprofit-making KGs so that we talk about holistic developments of the whole person. We had some family tragedies recently. Now, for the offenders, they engage in a very poor relationship with family members and there's also...
and there's also problem of social structure. On the nineteenth of March, for AM seven thirty oh, uh the Secretary of Education said that it was very sad. He said that family and society should give support. But it's quite hollow in what he said. Now, when a child is small, we have to nurture it. That person, it will determine his future. It's like courtesy, politeness, care, and other special knowledge. They are very important, just like our motto. Uh, you have to teach children and they walk in the right way and then until old age, he will not depart. Those we have to reduce the incidence of this sort of of tragedies. And lastly, the Education Panel should set up kind of special committee to monitor the progress of fifteen-year free education to tie it in with the at EDB Committee and its task force in order to implement the fifteen-year free education. And lastly, uh just like Chu Ka Leng and and he's one of his classics. I want to modify this. The CE has second office and there's much room for improvement for his public opinion. After six years of primary schools, six years of secondary schools and four years of university students. But how about KG education? It has drawn a blank. So perhaps people will be fatigued. This is really a crisis moment. This is the crux of the matter to enhance holistic education. So within two years, you should really implement the fifteen-year free education so that you can have a long-term development to nurture people and you to make good commitment to free education for KG. If expediously implemented, you have to show commitment, you have to show your backbone and then with the same mind, we should make full contributions to free education. Next, Ms. Chan Yin Cheng. I'm studying at Ivy, uh the childcare service course. I agree with the Alliance's eight-point aspiration. I would like to highlight several points. First, we have to affirm the teaching qualification, qualification uh letter now from ages three to six. It's very important for the nurture of children, life affects life and inspires life. We are talking about living children and the teacher can affect the children. So I'm receiving CE program. I hope to have further studies. CE is just the first step. We need to have more knowledge. So I hope that the secretary can provide more support to KG teachers to train up the teachers so that the KG teachers can meet the degree requirement. Secondly, the government should support of uh whole-day schooling for KGs to ease the burden of working parents. So do not neglect the importance of whole-day schooling. Now, for the voucher scheme, it's not fair to whole-day schooling. It cannot really ease the burden of the parents. For twenty eleven, twenty twelve, for whole-day schooling, the places, medium, forty-one thousand five hundred dollars deducting from the vouchers. Parents still have to pay for more than ten thousand dollars. It's really a burden for the parents. It's a loophole of the voucher scheme. For the whole-day schooling, they have to pay very expensive fees. Not every parent can afford it. Hope that the Secretary of Education can really achieve fairness so that whole-day schooling can be implemented and just change the allocation basis and not relying on the unit cost for half-day schooling so that we have quality education to support the parent, to ease the burden of the parents. I urge the secretary to implement fifteen-year free education and to make use of the golden period of pre-primary education and upgrade teacher trainings so that we can train the next generation. Ms. Lo Wei Yan, Secretary, Mister Chairman, colleagues. I'm a secondary student of higher diploma course on childcare service at Ivy. I'm a prospective teacher. I support the eight-point aspiration of the Alliance. I have three points. First, we have to scrap the voucher system because it is a palliative. It's not attacking the roots of the problem. It cannot cover all the fees of KGs so that the low-income parents have heavy burden. Government should make reference to the allocation system for primary and secondary schools to have full subsidy for KGs so they have free half-day and whole-day KGs. Secondly, every child is a citizen of the society. They should have the rights to receive quality education. There should be a education policy on this. We have to cater for the needs of the children and we should have diversification of the programs. We can provide the early childhood education services. And thirdly, quality education ensures that the children will have adequate care and it will also inspire them to learn further. So promoting high-quality pre-primary education is very important. And teacher career and professional development is also a linchpin. The government should have fair treatments and should reformulate the pay structure of the KG teachers. There should be progressive development letter to ensure better salaries, to respect the KG teachers. And we have to pass on the pattern for KG education. The children are the future pillars of society. We have to give them opportunity to prepare them for lifelong learning. So holistic education for children is very important. And also have a stable and quality teaching force. I hope that this is CYLCE, we exponentially promote fifteen-year free education. Mister Yan Ho On, Secretary, Mister Chairman, colleagues, councilors. I'm a practitioner of the field. Now, for the two public hearings, when some KG teachers may not have time to come here, I have collected their views. I hope that the secretary and the future committee can listen to these views. Now, for pre-primary education is not treated as important. Uh, say pay structure and other aspects etc. Are different from the provision for compulsory education. The KG practitioners may think that the contributions are not recognized by society. KG teachers want respect and recognition. So many KG teachers study further, they study degree courses at expense of their health. Sometimes the salaries may not be proportional to what they have given out. But for government which has massive surpluses and reserves, it doesn't want to make contribution to KG education. So how can you motivate the KG education? I'm a male, but I'm still appreciating the plight of the KG teachers. KG education is not incorporated into formal education. Now, pre-primary education is an inseparable part of basic education. So there should be fifteen-year free education. And EDB allocates four hundred and eighty million dollars for brilliant students to study overseas. The concept is all right, but there are a lot of hidden concerns. The brilliant students may get some wisdom in theories, but the situation in Hong Kong is unique. So the brilliance may come back to Hong Kong. But do they have the capability to promote the primary education in Hong Kong? I have reservations. Now, about enhancement of that, we can encourage the motivated teachers to further studies overseas, for example, degree programs. Or if they are great university graduates, they can have further studies. This will be a proper use of public money and then it will be progressive developments for KG teachers. Of course, the resources should be put into local teacher training. I'm talking about this from experience. For KG teachers, it's not that they will not engage in action. Some of them may not engage in radical action. Uh, they may be silent, but it does not mean that they accept the status quo because they attach importance to the well-being of students. I don't want to see the scenario where the KG teachers demonstrate here, uh leaving behind the students. Thank you. Next, Mister Chan Muk Keng. Mister Chairman, Secretary, colleagues. I'm speaking on behalf of the Anti-Women and Juvenile Welfare Association. We have five KG, five childcare services organizations and one KG. From the angle of management, I would like to talk about this. With the voucher system, money goes with people. The parents actually dictate terms in terms of our services. The parents may not have a comprehensive view. They look at the uh appearance of the school premises. They look at the manpower, look at the facilities. They neglect the educational concepts of the organizations or the approach of teaching. We try to be inspirational to the children so that the children will have independence capability to solve problems. But the parents hope that the schools provide more exams or training. Actually, we have tried to communicate with the parents and explain things to them. But before you speak, the parents actually have punished us. Actually, they they switch to another school. The other school provides a lot of training and that will suit the interests of the parents. So the parents really dominates our operations. Actually, we have lost our professional initiative. Sometimes we have to give up certain work. We have to do a lot of PR. We have to organize parental activities. Actually, it seems that we are playing to the gallery and pleasing the parents. So it's rather disappointing. Now, for the frontline principals, actually, they can't be helped. They have no other resort. Actually, I sometimes debate with the principal. The principal say that the parents have their requirements and demands. What's for the voucher system in terms of the use of resources? It reflects competition in the sector. Miss Sun mentioned several points. I don't want to repeat that. For assisting the parents for the whole-day schools, we have to give a lot of things to the parents. The parents want to select KGs and may not pay students with us. We can scrap the voucher system. We should have fifteen-year free education. We hope that we can have a professional initiative coming out. And we should have a fair mechanism so that childcare service bodies and the KGs should not be competing with each other for resources and then the parents have more choice. There should be a pay scale. And then, for the KG teachers, they will have a better treatment. Thank you. Doctor Amy Chuck. Mister Chairman. Emphasis of my speech is about meeting local society situations. Now, on the nineteenth of March, Secretary, you mentioned a couple of points. First, you set up a committee to study the definition of education in this regard. It shows that the secretary and really neglects the the work of the education sector for years. The education sector has actually put in a lot of efforts in studying the direction for pre-primary education and is rec- create KG objective. Hope that the secretary can really study the present literature on, for example, the two oh six documents and the curriculum guidelines and also other reform documents so that you appreciate more the direction of the KG education than you formulate whole policies and use this as a basis. Secondly, definition of basic education. We're talking about full subsidy. It is not the same as compulsory education. Now, survey data shows that for the intake of pre-primary education is more than ninety percent. That's the local characteristic. Now, also for pre-primary education, it is recognized by society. So actually, it's non-compulsory basic education. And meanwhile, I agree with the eight-point aspiration of the Alliance.
I want to elaborate on the two points. One is the central database and then the membership of the dedicated committee. Why is it that we want to establish a central database for the growth of children between aged between zero and eighteen? First, we need to track down all-round development and diversified needs of the children. Second, we should regularly collect data and also collect data in a timely manner so that we can keep a good tab of the latest situation in this society in order to draw up better policies. Third, it will help us in drawing up relevant policies. We would take into consideration the continuous development needs of children. And we can also tie education issues with other so- social issues like medical issues and so on. So that's why we suggested that the committee should comprise representatives from different sectors of the society. If there is an interdepartmental dialogue, then that would be better and we would be able to come up with a policy framework which better meets the children's needs. Now, in coming up with the policy on fifteen-year free education, I hope that the administration can take on a more macro perspective for the interest of children in Hong Kong. Are you finished? All right. Next one is Ms. Reni Lau. I'm from the BGCA, Hong Kong Children Nursery School, Com, Kindergarten, Wantai Parents and Teachers Association. On behalf of all parents, I speak in support of fifteen-year free education. First, parents have a need for whole-day KGs because they, parents have to work and they don't have anyone at home to take care of the young children in Hong Kong. Among those uh families with children under the age of six, fifty percent of the parents have to work. And for families who have newly arrived in Hong Kong or are in the low-income group, the whole-day KGs is a good support for the parents. It can help lessen the parents' burden and also help lift them out of poverty. The number of students in whole-day KGs has been increasing at a faster pace than those in half-day KGs. And the subsidy level is lagging behind. In the past few years, newly established whole-day KGs are few in number and they provide little choices for parents. The voucher scheme neglects the needs of whole-day KGs providing diversified services. And they have not taken heed of the good foundation of whole-day KGs. And that goes against the government's policy to encourage diversified service delivery mode. Now, for half-day KGs or rather whole-day KGs, parents expect their children to live in a community where they can learn self-care skills. The government has not conducted a review on such services and that is most regrettable. Secondly, we should also do away with hurdles um in the way of children's development. According to CNS Department Statistics, in twenty nineteen, some six hundred and fifty children have to take care of a thousand elderly people. What kind of talents do we need? We should lay a good foundation today or else. The Hong Kong society will not be able to develop sustainably and we may even have to devote more resources to make amends for problems like drug abuse and so on. Now, there have been family tragedies in recent days and that shows problems in family relationships. And I think the government should reflect deeply upon such incidents and draw And I think the government should reflect deeply upon such incidents and draw up precautionary measures. Next one, Dr. Karen Fong Wai Yin. Chairman, Secretary, Members, I'm from ELCHK Amazing Grace Nursery PTA. I support the eight proposals of the Alliance. I particularly request that the voucher scheme be scrapped and that full subsidy be given to KGs. And that the fifteen-year free education provided within twenty, within two years. I am a, a mother, a working mother of three children. I was supposed to, to speak in the public hearing on the nineteenth of March, but there, because there were too many people, so I am here today. Now, I have such a, a, a work, heavy workload, I have to take care of my work and my family. And two days off are really too many for me. But I found that taking days off for this course is really worth it. When I attended parent-teacher meetings, I noted that we organize many different kinds of activities. We are just an ordinary Christian KG and we don't have, we don't charge our high tuition fee, we don't have a high subsidy. But then the teachers and parents are doing the best to teach the, the children. I really appreciate their efforts. In our meetings, I often ask, what can I do for you? And the teacher said that as long as the parents recognize our work, we are happy. Now, it's one thing to be happy, it's another thing that they should make ends meet. So today, I have this opportunity to speak on their behalf and to fight for a reasonable remuneration for them. Uh, we are a whole-day KG, we operate from eight to six and then we provide extended service to eight PM. Now, teachers have to wait till after-school hours to work on their curriculum, on the decorations of the classrooms. I live near the KG. And then I note that teachers often work till late hours. So with such working, long, long working hours, they still have to further their studies as encouraged by the government. But after they have furthered their studies, they are not being, their qualifications are not being recognized by the administration. And then the government seems to be strolling on make, drawing up a pay scale for them. They have to pay a high tuition fees for their first, for their studies. They're working hard, so hard. And then, apart from going to evening school, the teachers have to be on a roster to man the extended service. The parents, before they go to work, they leave their children with the nursery, with our KG. And then after they get off work, they fetch their KG, uh, the, 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 the children from, from our school. And I think our service really helps the parents. And I hope, really hope that the administration does not pass on your responsibility to KGs with extended hours of service. I think the administration should take on your own responsibility. Uh, for those who, uh, well, you are sending all these outstanding students to overseas to study. That, it doesn't mean that they are committed to the sector. Now, why can't the government undertake to formulate a salary scale and for teachers and show respect to them by doing that? Some. You, you don't want teachers with experience to go away, don't you? Yes, the next one, Miss Wong Hua Cheng. I am from the Tenth Early Childhood Education Student Association, the Hong Kong IED. I don't agree with the Number One Paper. And that it says that pre-primary education is not part of basic education. I think you are neglecting our needs. And quality education is important and it is a right of every child. We agree with the eight proposals of the Alliance. And here, I would show my support through various perspectives. And I would hope that the government should provide a fifteen-year free education as soon as possible. First is continuing development. Continuing development is very important and the ones to benefit are the children. The, through, through furthering their studies, teachers can enhance their teaching quality and to meet with the needs of young children. And we hope that the government should provide for degree teachers in pre-primary education. Secondly, is requiring teachers to obtain a degree. Our teachers are, are doing, working hard to enhance their qualifications in Taiwan Macau. The government has required that pre-primary education teachers should hold a degree. But for Hong Kong, they are only required to obtain a certificate. So I think the government should implement as early as possible the requirement for ECE teachers to obtain a degree. Thirdly, is professional qualifications. I'm a prospective KG teacher and I don't believe that our contribution would be less than that of the primary and secondary school teachers. We want a fair treatment and equal treatment. It's only in a, on a level playing field that we will be inspired to provide quality teaching. Fourthly, is to cut down the teacher-student ratio through our practicum. Uh, we believe, we, we, we found that our role cannot be replaced. And I think we play a good, important role in teaching and we appreciate the efforts of the teachers in taking care of the children. Now, the existing ratio is one to fifteen and it affects adversely the teaching quality and the quality of care. And we hope that the administration should lower the teacher-student ratio to enhance more, uh, more interactions between the teachers and, between the teachers and the children. And I undertake that we would realize our mission to teach children with a passion and we would work hard. We hope that the administration and the community can give us support and encouragement so that we can maintain our passion for our children. On behalf of a group of prospective teachers, we hope that the government can implement fifteen-year free education as soon as possible. Next one is Miss Grace Cheng. Secretary, Chairman, Colleagues. I'm from Wang Tai Shin. And I'm a Vice Chairman of a Non-Profit-Making Kindergarten Association. Um, I, I, I believe that we are all very tired at this juncture, especially the secretary. I want to share with you a story, a story about a group of children. Several children of a family are so hungry and they asked their mom whether you can feed me with rice, I'm so hungry. I noted that the children next door, they have enough to eat, they can go to school and we can't even have porridge. The mom said, yes, yes, I, I, I'm thinking about it, please submit a proposal. And if it is right, then I will feed you with rice. If you are such a mom or the children, what will you do? Then the neighbors would say that you would, you can feed them with porridge as an interim measure. And then the mom said, well, wait and let's plan further. Now, this is the exact situation that we are facing here. We are in the pre-primary education. Why is it that we have to go to a great lengths to back for the government to help us? Now, our KG teachers, they have worked till very late and then they have to catch a bus in the late hours, holding in the hands. Still loads of work from the office or the school. Now, I want to share with you another story about the principals. Uh, this principal is very passionate when she joined the trade. And she, people ask her, what sort of school are you in? And she said, it's a kindergarten. And she has a, a sort of, she received lukewarm response from those around her. And this principal still works hard and she furthers her studies. And when she graduates, and she thinks that, uh, her, she has achieved something and then she has become the principal. And then she finds that she has to face a lot of pressure. The EDB warns us every day that you should make good achievements or else you're the, you will be excluded from the voucher scheme. And she has to put up with a lot of pressure. And then she has also to meet with the demands from her subordinates. Then the principal is about to close down and the teacher told the principal that let's cut our salary together. We have a mission and we have a vision and we don't want to leave. And the amount that they are willing to cut is in terms of several thousand dollars because the kindergarten continues to operate without a rent subsidy. I think this is the real scenario of what we're facing here today. I know I've gone over time, but I want to add that the, the reason, that the due, the, the, the pay to a KG teacher is not reasonable. A KG teacher is working long hours and the principal is heartbroken to see that the teacher is suffering so much. And I cry all the time when I face the situation of the teachers. I'm a Christian, I hope that the secretary can fight for our rights. Thank you, Miss Cheng. Next one is Mister Larry Thai. Chairman, Secretary, colleagues, members, good morning. I'm a parent and I'm also a trainer for KG teachers. I fully support the eight proposals of the Alliance. Uh, we note that the EDB has been making improvements to the KG education in terms of the quality assurance. It has been putting a lot of pressure to bear on the KGs. Now, the KGs have achieved their required standards. Can the secretary really think about how to implement fifteen-year free education? Can the CE and the secretary be more determined to improve the teaching environment, both the tangible and intangible environment of the KGs? Now, somebody said just now that teachers are willing to cut their pay. Now, now, even if they are doing that and even, even if they are furthering their studies, they wouldn't be able to discharge their functions effectively, given the existing environment. If we don't have the resources and the right environment, we wouldn't be able to develop and grow. The present teaching environment is posing a hurdle to our teaching and it's lessening or hitting or dealing a blow to our morale. The facilities of the KGs have been upgraded these days. And I think the committee to be established, please review, say, the size of the kindergartens. Because according to the pre- criteria agreements, every person should get at least one point eight square meters and the indoor area should not be less than fifty percent of that. Now, given the facilities and all the teaching materials, we don't have enough space. And then the EDB has talked about giving a one-off subsidy of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do my, for us to do minor improvement works, but that wouldn't be able to help much. I hope that the administration should conduct a comprehensive review to improve the environment of the KGs and to improve the tangible and intangible environment and to provide full subsidy to improve the teacher-student ratio and to create a better teaching environment for teachers. Next one, Mister Francis Chow. Chairman, colleagues. I want to spend some time on my, talking about my personal experience. We have many stories of the poor within a very affluent society. Uh, we see a lot of poor people. I think they are sort of naive in a way because for their own dreams and missions, they are willing to earn a low pay just to realize their dreams. In many sophisticated or well-developed societies, pre-primary education is well-respected and the salary of the teachers is definitely not lower than that of primary and secondary school teachers. I'm a treasurer in, of a nonprofit-making KG. When I served in the social service sector, I was also a volunteer advisor to several schools. And I'm also a volunteer school board member of one of the KG here. I want to say to you, um, administration, you are the policymakers and don't pass on your responsibility to the dedicated committee to be established. You have to do a good work in your job as a secretary. The secretary has to do a good work in managing the documents and you should also be a good advisor and then ultimately, you are the ultimate decision-maker. Don't put, um, or don't try to pass on your responsibility to the committee. Now, if you are going to finish your work in two years, I'll give you a grade of E. If you're going to finish your work in one and a half years, I'll give you a B grade. And now, if you can implement the short and medium measures as soon as possible, I'll give you a grade of A minus. You would not be happy receiving those grades that I mentioned. In the last hearing, we said that we support you establish, to establish a committee. And you are the people who are responsible for putting pressure on the administration to implement appropriate policies to meet with the needs of pre-primary education.
Next, Miss Peng, and the last one to speak. I'm the Concern Group on Preschool Education. Uh, we agree with the eight requests put forward by the Alliance. I'm a frontline worker in KG education. Since the launching of the PUVS, the administration has asked the teachers to reach the, uh, to meet the requirements in five years' time. We have to cope with the workload, we have to further our studies. Therefore, teachers have been under a lot of pressure. Five years have already passed. We've been working hard, working quietly, but what have we got in return? We don't even get the basic, um, um, need addressed, that is a salary scale. Many teachers have been disappointed and lots of them have already left. So the wastage rate of teachers is going up all the time. I hope the administration will face the question squarely, that is the wastage rate and the salary scale. Please reinstate a salary scale, please subsidize the salary of teachers directly. So give due recognition to our status. I think the most practical way is to use a good salary to retain the teachers. You're going to spend four hundred and eighty million dollars to enable twenty-plus students who are elite students to go overseas to study. You'd like to retain the talents, you want them to contribute to the KG education. But we are still unsure about the outcome. But what we know for sure is that we haven't got government subsidies and yet many teachers are dipping into their pockets to study for a degree course. We know that for education, one cannot afford to stand still or mark time. Um, so please provide a subsidy to teachers so that they can have continuing education. If we can do that, then no one can doubt our contribution. We need to respect the talents. But at this moment, Secretary, may I ask this question? Today, we have experienced and qualified KG teachers. When can we, we get the respect from the administration?
Thank you. I would like to thank the deputations and individuals for what you have said. At this moment, I would like to give the floor to the secretary to give an overall reply to the points made. Once again, let me thank you all for attending to this meeting, which is a public hearing. You have spoken from the bottom of your heart, you have come up with very good suggestions. Let me emphasize once again.
We are being sincere and we will deal with this topmost priority issue. For the various topics that you referred to, as well as the points made on the nineteenth of March, you have rightly pointed out the main areas of focus. Let me say this again. In the coming two years, of course, the committee will be working very hard. There will be a number of task forces under the committee. Again, they will be working very hard. And then we'll decide on the priorities and we will certainly give priority to the most urgent business. Um, I don't think the KG education will come to a standstill in the interim. We'll be introducing short-term and medium-term measures. So in two years' time, uh, we'll be able to complete certain tasks and then for others which can be launched earlier, uh, would like to see them implemented earlier. So please understand that we are going to do it in parallel and we are joining hands to do it. I'm glad to see that you are wholly dedicated to the task. So we swear no effort in this regard. Thank you, secretary. Now, the floor is open to questions and discussion. For those who would like to speak and ask questions, please raise your hand. Just now, before Mr. Liu left, he raised his hand, but he's not yet here. Now, let me read out the order. You've got Yuen Long, Qu Hong, Kenneth Chen, Raymond Wong in that order. Now, he's come back. You want to ask a question, right? Just to remind you that in accordance with Rule eight-two-three-A in relation to their business before us, if you have a director in direct pecuniary interest, before you speak, please disclose the nature of your interest. Mr. Ye, um, four minutes for questions and answers each. Mr. Chairman, we have principals, teachers, teacher-students. Um, they have spoken a lot. I think all of them have been moved. We are moved and we hope that the secretary and officials from the Education Bureau will also feel the same and uh hear what they have said. Now, we should be moved to take action. Just now, the chairman made a very good point during the first session. Probably, uh, the chair is being moved by the Buddha's teaching and he has given a very good piece of advice to the secretary. Uh, I think currently there's the absence of trust and confidence. To address the problem, we need action and we can't afford to delay. You have to act instantly. Now, many people have talked about priorities, urgency. It's pointless to repeat the same point ten times. What we need to do now is to salvage the confidence and re-establish the trust. Instant action is the right answer. I think that they have given you all the hints and tips as to what should be done. I think all you have to do is to read our minutes and then you can come up with a plan of action. As what can be done immediately, I think you can tell from the list. Now, Mr. Chairman, we are here to talk about the provision of free KG education. In Mr. C Y Leng's electoral platform, he has got a very clear message. So if you have a action plan, which is concrete, then it will be a piece of good news. Let me read this out again. In his electoral manifesto, in point four, he had said that for the whole day and half-day kindergartens, there will be more subsidies. There will be more places and priority will be given uh to help the needy parents and the vulnerable families. Now, subsidies to be given to KGs. I think that's a very clear message. Just now, many speakers have already said that as to why the whole-day kindergartens should be given um the right level of subsidies. Since there is already a commitment, I don't think we need to wait for the committee to finish its scrutiny in two years' time. I think a commitment in the electoral manifesto is more authoritative and more important than any conclusion to be arrived at by the committee. So I think the bureau should implement this as soon as possible. So I just wondered if the secretary can do this today or in the near future and make announcement that you will increase the subsidies to be given to the whole-day KGs and the half-day KGs so that we can use this as a litmus paper to test the sincerity of the administration. We look forward to a good uh piece of good news. I think whole-day KGs are very important. It provides a choice to the parents. I've some time left for the secretary to give a reply. Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As to the points raised by the honorable member, as well as the other points made by the speakers, like the pay scale, um, pay level, all of them are priorities. As I have said, the committee will set up task forces to look at them immediately. Do you expect something to be done in two to three months' time and then we can act on the conclusion? I'm sure the committee and the task forces will give priority to such urgent issues. That's too vague. Uh, Mr. Ng, can you not tell us as to when it can be done? The secretary has already said to be done in two years' time. Mr. Liu.
Uh, I think we are saving lives. It is like a safe uh putting out a fire. It we are in as dire a situation as that. Now, for the users of the service, um, I think even if you ask them to come, they will still say the same. Uh, despite being young children, I think they will just tell you the truth and they will say that C Y Leng and Eddie Ng have been telling lies. Now, having listened to all the points made, I think we can still make a distinct uh we can still distinguish what's the most urgent one. Uh, you will set out a list of, say, ten items and then you will prioritize them and then that would become the roadmap. Now, even if I give you two years' time, which is more urgent? If it is more urgent, if you don't ask for the funding this year, what what are you going to do? Would you like to come for supplementary provision? So today is no way that you will be let off for the budget. A member cannot ask for more expenditure to be incurred. All we can do is to reduce the level of expenditure and that's the gist of filibustering. Perhaps you should be the first to receive a pay cut. If you want to do four things, then you need to get the money ready. Otherwise, where can you find the money? Well, in fact, you always say that the legislators do not know how to do certain things. Now, I've given you a piece of advice. Please prioritize the various urgent issues and then you apply for the funding. You always say that you respect the committee. You don't need to respect it. To show genuine respect, you need to get money for the committee. If you don't go along this line, then the administration is checking the responsibility. Well, the administration has got its should have its own philosophy and try to build a consensus. Now, in the community, we have got a particular idea or maybe the C has got an idea, but it seems that he's forgotten it. So there's no way that you can escape from this. You need to prioritize your issues and then the educational sector will talk to you. Now, let me say this again. If you don't get the money now, you don't have the money in this year. It means that out of two years, we'll lose the time of one year. And then you will become very rushed and then easily you will make mistakes. Today, I I don't intend to criticize you because if you are criticized too much, you'll become scared and then you don't know what to do. So please set up a roadmap, talk to John Zheng and then tell him, I'm Eddie Ng and I'm an official, but I dare to challenge you as the financial secretary. Otherwise, I will resign. So say this to John Zheng and then you need to tell him this. Now, the F S has said that he will spend money where it is due. Now, education is something for the long term. Isn't it a meaningful task? So it is a simple one. Now, we are supposed to look at the stars in the sky and be practical. Well, we don't want to have our views being distorted, so um we don't want to see things live and go. I think this is the first time that I asked for more money to be given to the government. This is because we can't ask the administration to incur more public expenditure. Only the officials can do this on their own initiatives or agree with us. So talk to the F S. Tell him that you will resign if he doesn't agree with you. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Kenneth Chen. Let me once again thank the colleagues in the education sector. And in fact, there are some familiar faces because you're also from the um Baptist University. Now, we act with the same voice. We have the same action in mind and we all have the um a childlike simplicity here. Now, we are all dedicated and yet what we have got in return is a committee. Uh, we are not sure whether our dreams will come true. Now, like you, Mr. Liu, we have asked the secretary to um to stand firm and ask for the money. Uh, but I don't think this will be done. I think it's a matter of social justice. For so many years, um KG teachers use their own time and their own resources um to add value to themselves for the sake of education, for the sake of our future education. So it's a matter of one hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars to enhance ourselves. Uh, this year, we see that in the budget, twenty elite students will get four hundred and eighty million dollars. Perhaps the secretary and the bureau will think that they are doing a good job. Now, they are attracting talents to go to the education sector. So it's to prove that the elites will also go to the educational sector. And then for them who are given a scholarship, will have to come back to Hong Kong to serve Hong Kong. I think they have good motives, but then you have to face the reality. I think you are on a different wavelength. You don't think along the same lines as we do. Now, we've been working so very hard and then you have said that you have been to twenty-plus such meetings. Now, we have got over one hundred deputations, individuals here, but none of them have told us that um and they have met the secretary before. So it seems that the dialogue is not being held along the same wavelength. So we haven't got much much trust in your undertaking. We don't have a lot of confidence in you. We are not too sure whether there will be action backing up your slogans. Because what you have given us in return is a proposal to spend four hundred and eighty million dollars for those of us who are at the frontline, for those of us who are trying our best to do what is within our portfolio. I think it is a great disappointment. That's why we have put forward a lot of question marks and yet they've only given us certain slogans. Secretary, I don't know whether you're going to do this or not, but in the forthcoming budget debate, please consider this matter. Four hundred and eighty million dollars. I don't know how you can make adjustments. Even if you don't make adjustments in relation to that, for early childhood education, try to think of something. Do something which is focused, targeted, give them the resources that they need and then you can win back our trust in you and our confidence in you which have been lost. So trust and confidence, what is your reply? Well, very soon you'll see a committee. Very soon you will see a number of task forces. Very soon you will see their their work, their performance. So we are going to take um action and we'll be moving in that direction. So he's asking us to be patient. Raymond Wong, let me say this instantly. No more nonsense. Give us a timetable. It's as simple as that. There is already a consensus on this matter. No divergence. Both the administration and the committee or even lawmakers all agree on it. Even for something which has a consensus among everybody, you still don't have a timetable. You're still marking time like Mr. Six Eight Nine. Um, you're wasting time. Why? What what do you mean when you say that very quickly? It's too vague. We want something more concrete, something more specific. We want a timetable. We want a roadmap. So many of them have spoken so much. At least you need to give a more sincere response. Today, at this public hearing, they have spoken so much. You need to give a reply. We haven't got a verbatim report. We 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 have got written submissions. We have got verbal statements. Do you think that you that's that's it after listening to them on the spot? I'm most unhappy with your reply. Don't just say that very soon, very soon. Give us a timetable. When are you going to fix it? The legal won't stand in the way if you approach the F C to get money. Are we going to block them? If they say tomorrow, the day after tomorrow, next week, next month, July or August, would that be what he means by as soon as possible? In the past with the techno class, we have got the A O's ring Hong Kong is without a human touch and then they would just follow the policy guidelines. But now you are a official under the accountability system. In other words, you can formulate the policies as what Mr. Liu has said. You are not a machine. You are not a uh lifeless, cool machine. For the two A O sitting next to you, then it's different. They are really machine-like. So they can only act in accordance with the system and in accordance with the guidelines because they are merely A O's.
But you are an accountable principal official. This is a major policy. There is no divisions of views. About fifteen-year free education, there are eight points of aspiration. You can have a discussion. You can overcome technical problems. But in principle, there is no problem. You should not drag your feet. Why is it that you are dragging your feet? Why is it that you say that things will come very fast? He should answer that. Your definition of being fast, Mr. Secretary? Within a few weeks, the committee will be set up. And all the questions concerning timetable, about the urgent items, all the individual working groups will start their work. And then there will be certain tentative plans concerning certain actions to be taken. And actually, for the committee members, many of them are representatives from the sector. So for the urgent and prompt items, they will be reflected at the committee. I think the setting up of the committee means that a lot of things can start. As I stress again, my colleagues will I call it as a priority. You have to appreciate that the launch of the committee is very good. Uh, otherwise, what's the use of this committee? Wang Jun, anything to add? No. The last one, okay, I will speak, is the secretary. We're talking about fifteen-year free education. There's the second public hearing. According to nineteen and today, we have had about a hundred and sixty deputations and individuals commenting on the issue. About seventy individuals are deputated today for these four hours. Well, I really it's really a mixed feeling for me. Ms. Zhang spoke and I was nearly moved to tears. And something glad today is that a lot of young teachers, Chong Po Yi, Leng Xiaoting, Fang Wafeng for the first session and Tang Chun Yin. Well, I was glad to talk about young teachers speaking and Mr. Ting studying at the Baptist University, which shows that we have talents in the education sector. For fifteen-year free education, there is a social consensus. Parents and teachers recognize this. The government has money. There are talents. What do you like? I think the government and the Secretary for Education should really have the same mind to launch this scheme and to bring into play implementation. If the policy is successful, it's really If the policy is successful, it's really a beneficial policy of the new government. The first session, the speaker said that, uh, success or failure depends on you, Secretary. It's well said, you are really the gatekeeper of this issue. I don't want you to procrastinate further. Don't want to use the candidate's, uh, term of hair, but you should not procrastinate. You should really, uh, take prompt action. The committee should compress the timetable so that they conduct studies, and they explore the feasibility, and they bring about implementation so that citizens and the education sector can really have their dream come true. That is, uh, expeditiously will implement fifteen-year free education. So that, uh, in the dark, we are moving towards the light. And many people, uh, lose confidence in you and the government. If we can launch this quickly, then I can say that, uh, the new government will attract a lot of good public opinion. Please make use of this opportunity. We are talking about nurturing talents. You plant trees in ten years, but you nurture people in a hundred years. Uh, first, one of the speakers of the first session said that, uh, actually, nurturing people, directing people, actually, is a low-profile, silent process. It would be good to the well-being of Hong Kong society. This investment is secure. Pre-prim education will lay a good foundation for nurturing talents in Hong Kong. You will nurture a lot of good principal officials in future, perhaps your successor. Hope that the Secretary can really keep an eye on the timetable of free education. Well, the Chairman can speak longer. And first, we have a, a lot of young qualified, uh, teachers. Of course, the veteran teachers are also good, but there we have a lot of brilliant, uh, young teachers about the committee. Don't want to talk about membership, but with the membership include teachers, especially young teachers, uh, future masters. For example, Fang Wah Feng, uh, the post-nineties in the first session, her view is very important. Otherwise, your committees' studies may not suit their needs. We attract, uh, young teachers. Secondly, some individuals are deputations very frustrated, and that is, you spent four hundred eighty million dollars as seed money to train up the elite students, and they just come back to serve for two years. But these young teachers have a lifelong commitment. Why is it that they are not the elites for these four hundred eighty million dollars? Can you enhance it? So that for most of the quota, okay, you train up twenty people a year. How about you assign some part of the quota to in-service teachers? Because they will have a lifelong commitment, they can train up a lot of principal officials. Secretary, please answer. The first question, the answer is easy. Yes, indeed. If you look at the membership, you can really see that we have put in a lot of thought in the composition of the, uh, committee. I have confidence, because the membership is quite representative. Secondly, I would like to thank Chairman for asking the question, so that I can explain it. Now, for the E T B, actually, we are reforming our units to strengthen up, uh, teacher training, especially training for leadership of the schools, and we will put in a lot of resources to this. So about scholarship, bursaries, overseas learning, et cetera, so they will delve with this area. KG education is an important segment. We'll catch up with, uh, the work that has not been done. Now, for four hundred eighty million dollars, the main thing is to let public know. I have met different organizations and groups. They say that we have to, to deal with the professional teachers in Hong Kong, and they have to get a fair deal. They are making contributions. Some people say that elite students will not go into the sector of education. Perhaps it's an illusion in society. Uh, some elite students can go to investment banks, they may become doctors. But actually, I hope that some of them will consider education as a lifelong career. We have not pinned down the, the subjects demanded. We can launch the scheme, and actually, we have a scheme to nurture human resources. We hope that, uh, we can nurture people's commitment to education. It's not just giving money for them to study. And for other circumstances, if a lot of people apply, do we have, uh, priorities set? Say, for English and early childhood education, we call it a priority. That's the situation. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to explain it, this is very important. But please do not think that for four hundred eighty million dollars, we're just focusing on this and we do not do other things. Now, for working group on professional developments, especially on KG education, there'll be a lot of things to be done in this area. Thank you. Thank you, I would like to thank all the deputations and individuals for attending this session. So thank you for allocating valuable time to this meeting. The time will not be wasted, we can work together to make contributions to education. If you have further views, you can give us your views in writing. And for your speaking notes, uh, they were brilliant. If you can leave your speaking notes to our secretaries, then we can keep a record. Meeting adjourned, thank you.